Gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting of Harrisonville Board of Aldermen. Would you rise and recite the pledge with us?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff is present. Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
(Inaudible)
Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Mayor.
Alderman Zaring.
Present.
Mayor.
All present, thank you. We do have a quorum. We do have a service award to present tonight. Chief Meyer, where are you?
(Inaudible)
There it is. Our other proclamations have been postponed, so you're at the start tonight. So this is an award for 20 years of service. You've been a fireman and a paramedic for 20 years. Tell us about that.
(Inaudible)
Ah, yeah.
(Inaudible) Started off when we were downstairs in the basin on the MSI. Well, it's been a few years as well, but 20 years.
What's the biggest change you've seen in fire services in 20 years?
Equipment, the people, the more people we serve. Changes in healthcare, changes in equipment.
Yeah. Well, we want to thank you for 20 years of service, and I'll present this to you. And I want you to know that I'm going to shake your hand.
(Inaudible)
You've probably got the cleanest hands in the house, I would imagine. And then City Administrator Ratliff wants to congratulate you also.
I watched him.
Okay. So do you want to do a picture?
Yeah, let's see all three of them there.
All right.
Ready. Five, one, two, three. There you go.
Congratulations. Okay. Moving on to public participation, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board of Aldermen this evening?
Yes.
Step forward to the podium.
Madam Mayor, before we get started, if, I think I know what these folks want to talk about, and I just want to, I've got a little statement, I want to put into the minutes, and I'll give a copy to Randy. I understand that there are folks here that want to talk about the flooding at the Walker Edition, and so I wanted to provide a public statement as the city attorney that it is regrettable that the city of Harrisonville and its elected officials and staff cannot have a complete and open conversation with its citizens regarding flooding problems. However, litigation has been initiated against the city by several individuals, which unfortunately handcuffs the city in exchange of information. Before the city could responsibly provide complete and thoughtful information, the city would need assurance from plaintiff's legal counsel that its continuing efforts to address complaints and issues are not going to be used against the city in the litigation. As a result, even though we are not litigation counsel, we've advised the aldermen and staff to listen to citizens and provide limited information regarding efforts to coordinate with other agencies and stakeholders. We applaud the city's efforts to schedule an informational meeting with many stakeholders involved, including the Army Corps of Engineers, the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, and other agencies. Hopefully, at such meeting, those agencies with information and authority can more directly address the concerns from citizens. We understand the frustration, but please recognize that limitation on the city's ability is a result of a decision made by some citizens to bring lawsuits against the city. And I wanted to put that in the minutes first, because as I've advised the city, I understand there may be a tiptoe question in the answers, but given that we've been sued, we'll take the questions, but I don't know that you can responsibly give any real answers. I do know Mr. Ratliff has some information that he wants to share, but beyond that, I don't know how much we can do for that.
That was an art issue.
Sorry.
Good point.
I thought it was coming.
Ours is actually Shady Lane.
Wait, if you would give your name and address.
Sure.
Into the microphone.
Sure.
Front clerk, please, thank you.
I am Sarah Clausen, and I'm at 501 North Lexington.
Did you get that ring?
I am Sarah Cornields, and I'm at 407 North Lexington. So Shady Lane runs right between us, and it is an alleyway, and it's not wide enough for two vehicles to pass. So our yards are getting trashed, people are driving in our yards. School buses are not supposed to back up. Unfortunately, I have one of the short handicap buses that comes through to pick up children, and it's had to back up several times because people will pull right in front of her as she's going down the road, and she will have to put it in reverse and go out the other way because they refuse to halt. I own three pieces of property down there, and there's a huge driveway down at my lot. They refuse to pull in there, they instead drive on our yards. We've had this issue for years. It's getting more awkward. There's only one resident on that street in that, in that short span that would argue over changing it to a one-way street. I don't care which way you make it. Northeast, it doesn't matter to me as long as it's safer, because literally, if two cars try to pass where that creek is at, somebody's going to go off in the creek. If they're passing by each other, they're driving in our yards. It fully in my side of the yard, there's tracks, it's breaking away. I have, I have pictures of her yard. My, mine on my side up there is my driveway. So my vehicles are parked there, so they're almost hitting the back end of my vehicles. They're flying through, they're not just doing, you know, 15 to 25. We've watched them, and I mean, they've just about hit us. We have children that are crossing back and forth to play with each other, they watch for cars. If they don't get way back, people swerve into the yards and almost hit children, and it's getting very bad on that corner and that whole edge of our, both of our properties. On the southern side of that road where she's talking about they're cutting through, they've literally cut almost into the ditch, so they're up almost to the streetlights. That's how far up on the sidewalk they're going. We have tighter tracks going just inches away from the total goal, they've cut that corner so tight.
Well, let's do this. Make sure that you leave your phone numbers with the clerk also, so that we have a way to contact you, and we'll have staff investigate this and follow up with you. That'll be both the Public Works Department and the Police Department. So if you'll give us contact information where we can follow up with you, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, please.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak, step forward.
Okay, I'll kind of start off, because I'm from the Walker subdivision, my name's Kyna. And I'll definitely start off with addressing the attorney on some of his statements that we did not give, that you guys cannot answer, because we did not give adequate time for the city to do anything. That is a lie, and I don't think anybody on that block agrees with that. The reason we had no higher litigation is because nothing was being done. It may not be personal to nobody else, but it is personal with us because we were losing everything. So to say that we did not give you guys time to respond or do anything, that is an absolute lie. And my next statement, so for you to say that, is just a slap in the face to everybody here. So my next statement is, I mean, am I not correct, is that what you said?
No, ma'am, I didn't say that.
Okay, well then, correct me on that. On the very beginning of it.
Yes, ma'am. It's all written out, I'll give it to, it'll be in the minutes, but I didn't say anything about time. It's not in my statement at all.
Well, what exactly did you say? So that way I can, I'll correct myself, definitely.
Ma'am, your four minutes are running, so it really doesn't matter, and arguing with me isn't going to help much.
Whatever. Anyway, the board has had time to do something. I think like, and I'm just going to speak on this, on this part. I feel like good faith, Judy, would have been. You may not be able to do the big picture, but I'm just going to speak for Melissa, and I don't know if they did anything for her, but you guys could have did good faith. Less than $1,000 that the city code, your past administration, I mean, the past administration did not catch her backwater valve, but it's about to be rain season for her. I don't know if she has a backwater valve yet, because they was going to put it in, but no one's did anything. That would be a good faith thing for you guys to do for her, since the code people did it. That would show that you were really stepping up and doing something for us. And another thing, how did somebody cut down all them trees and nobody is taking account for that? That is amazing to me. We don't know who cut the trees. We didn't cut the trees, Sutherland didn't cut the trees, Compton didn't cut the trees, Moad didn't cut the trees. So, the hotel people did. They had them people come in, I mean, that's just the way it is. I mean, that, I just feel like no one gets in there and really talks and questions people and do anything. Maybe you guys are, I don't know, but I just feel like it's two years nothing's been done in the past administration. Everybody wants to pass it off, and I know this is coming from your standpoint, but it is just, no one wants to talk to us, I feel like, and they say litigation. We had no choice, our hands were tied, but to do litigation. We just have to do the right thing by us. Move our homes. Move our homes on that side, at least that side of the street. Mine and them talked about putting in barriers along that. Help us. I mean, we're not asking for anything above that anybody else would. These are our homes, we don't have a choice. All of us work and have to go to work every day, and we are going to end up losing everything come rain season. It is, my foundation cracked again. It is probably a month away from about to be flooding, and it's going to be bad. So that's all I'll just say. Next time, maybe your attorney can show a little compassion to some of the people. They're losing everything.
T.M. Caldwell, 107 East Walker Drive. So, hello, for those of you that do not know me, I am T.M. Caldwell, and I'm a resident of Harrisonville for 35-plus years. I went to school here, I grew up here, I left a little after high school, we started a family, and we moved back. There were no strangers, no agenda, and when we shook hands, it was a promise that we made, you know, we took people by their word. We've gotten plenty of handshakes over the last two and a half years since our flooding has started, but we've also had a lot of empty promises.
That's right.
We are now approaching yet another spring season, and if what they are predicting is correct, a lot of the residents and local businesses will flood again. It's not a matter of if, it is when. And for this, for the last two and a half years, our town has experienced major flooding, not just in the Walker Edition, but also the city park, Homes Off Two, Orchard Highway, or, I'm sorry, Orchard Road, Independence, just to name a few. We've asked for help, we've begged for your help, and to date, we've gotten not one answer, nor a, not one solution, and not because of a lawsuit. This was prior to any of that stuff even being filed. We certainly have heard from you all that you cared for us, and it should have been corrected a long time ago. There's been a lot of finger pointing, and yet again, there's been no solution. At the last meeting, the citizen approached this microphone and asked about the flooding, and he didn't even get promises, solutions, a plan of action. You know what he got? He got the almighty brush-off. Need to talk to the engineer after the meeting. Is that really what it's come to after all this time? You are the board and the mayor that we have elected, that we're asking you to represent us and do what's right, and you couldn't even give the courtesy of actually discussing something that was important, not just for one family, but for several families within this town. The brush-off tactics have cost the local families and businesses millions of dollars in loss to date, and each passing year, that number rises, and enough is enough. Local residents and businesses have been waiting for the Army Corps of Engineer report on the flooding in this area since the last major flooding in September of 2019. This report was supposed to help figure out what might the contributing factors be and outline and suggest solutions. We were told that we would have that report here in December. Every single month, we've asked for a report, and there's been no report. It's now March, and we still have no report nor a solution for the upcoming season. I, along with many other concerned citizens, are tired of the "we care" speeches, the "we're doing all we can" speeches, and the "we're working behind closed doors to get things done" speeches. I know what most of you elected officials are going to say. You're going to say, because we've heard the same thing the last two and a half years, that you're working diligently into getting this taken care of, but the matter of fact, that isn't the case. There hasn't been one thing, other than just recently, culverts getting cleaned out, and those have been done poorly at that. And how did you all decide that that was going to be the first thing that you guys were going to do? And did you all think about the repercussions of when you clean that out, what the cause and effect was going to be? Because more than likely, we're going to flood faster than that. Although it was a nice thing to get the ball rolling on that, but did anyone talk to any other engineers, state, city? Why are we adding anything to these businesses that are already flooding? Why are we adding any businesses until we get that report back? Obviously, all of these answers will not be answered, since you have your statement at the beginning.
It's okay.
I guess, what is it going to take to get things done? Because we've asked nicely, we've yelled, we've cried, and we still don't have a solution. Not one answer.
Pam.
You asked for transparency, no, you asked for transparency from the last council.
Your four minutes are up.
Great, well, I'm going to go ahead and say then, why don't you guys be transparent in what it is that you guys are doing? And why don't you guys start video on your keysters and start getting stuff done?
Ma'am, your four minutes are up.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the board? Please move to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Larry Strath, spoke at the last meeting. My address is A-10 Mark Patton Street. And as you indicated, I've never, still got definitive answers. I did contact the Corps, and I had some response from them I would like to share with anybody who wants it. They said the report should be done, and once it's finalized, you can get it and the modeling work begun, but it may require a freedom of information and request. The other matter I'd like to address is dealing with the COVID-19 virus. They're predicting a medical facility shortage, and I know Harrisonville has an old medical facility that was talked about being converted to old, or assisted living or something like that. What is the status of that? Is there a possibility you can make that available? And since we have an emergency act, if there's things missing, you may be able to decrease procurement time to get those items if they are needed to replace, be replaced. So I'm just curious, does anybody know who controls the hospital, what shape it is in, what it would take to get it ready to become a facility that could be used for this COVID-19 crisis?
Well, the city does not own that building, and we have Cass Regional Medical Center right down the road. That would be the facility for medical care.
They're predicting up to 17% of people who contact us to need medical attention. Today, they addressed that they're requesting the Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA to come up with hospital facilities. So what can we do to aid them in giving facilities? Or, to me, that's a possibility. At one time, you could have got some equipment from Ivan Army Hospital, which has been recently decommissioned. Now, they were selling those items off, and I don't know what the status of that is. That was about a year ago. But this is something, you have a chance of getting ahead of the curve at this point and steady behind it, as you have been in the slave situation. So who can take responsibility and check into that?
Since the city doesn't own it, we cannot commit to try and take control of it, fill it with stuff we don't have or we don't own, and so the answer would be, as far from the legal perspective, is it's not ours.
It's not yours, but what condition? The code officials should be inspecting it if there's construction going on.
There is no, there is no construction going on.
There's demolition going on, there was.
It's not ours.
I understand that, still, the code officials inspect to make sure it's up to city code when buildings are constructed, so they should know what condition.
Well, again, we don't own the facility, it's not ours to use.
So you're passing it again. You don't want to handle another situation.
No, we're not passing it again, sir.
In America, if you own property, the government can't force you. The government can come in, emote your name. They have to go through a whole legal process. An emergency situation, that can be expedited.
I believe that facility is anywhere near habitable.
That's fine, if that's the answer I'm looking for, if that's the situation, that's explainable.
If the Army Corps of Engineers, if the, if the federal government shows up and wants our cooperation, we will cooperate in every manner.
But yes, I would suggest you chime back down and say there is an old facility here that may be tactical, because we're talking about building new facilities, and usually rehabbing an old one is much faster than building a new one. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Strath. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close public participation. And at this point, I would ask you to please silence your cell phones. We'll move on to the approval of minutes, and I'd like to remind the aldermen to please speak into your microphone. First is the Minister of the Board of Aldermen Work Session, March the 2nd.
Make a motion to approve. Sarah.
Thank you, I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, the minutes are approved. The Minutes of the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, March 2nd, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, those minutes stand approved. The executive session minutes, which you received in a sealed envelope at your desk.
One, two, three.
Thank you. I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay. A motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dickerson to approve the minutes from the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, those minutes stand approved. Under Agenda Items, the Library Truck Night, is that you, Chief Hopper?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen. Before you tonight, there's an event permit for Library Truck Night. They are requesting to do this on June 15th. They are requesting to use two of the city's parking lots, just to the north of the library parking lot, and they will fill that with trucks and have pedestrians come by and look at the different trucks. They've done this for many years, we've had no problems or concerns, other than what we're dealing with now, and hopefully, we've done with that despite June, but that would be the only thing. This, uh, Street Department will work with them to block off those two parking lots for the event, so, and, and Street Department usually participates as well as the Department of the City Department, so, we have no problem with it, we encourage it. Do you have any questions?
Questions for the chief?
I have any question, we approve Library Truck Night, 2020.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Milner to approve Library Truck Night, stands approved June of 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, go right ahead.
Uh, next thing on the agenda is our annual special traffic enforcement grant application. We have for 2020, 2021, this starts in October, runs through September of 2021. We requested $9,600 in assistance. This would be overtime for officers to work either DWI enforcement, seatbelt enforcement, or hazardous moving violations enforcement. We have done this for close to 20 years. You can see the different disciplines that were used, requested for each of those. We just need a signature on this sheet of paper that we will submit with our grant applications, the hard copy, the, um, soft copies have already been submitted, so we just need your support in doing so. Do you have any questions?
This is the form that all the aldermen signed and created. Questions for the chief? I don't see any questions. I'm going to circulate your form.
Thank you.
Does anybody want, we'll go ahead and do a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
A motion from Alderman Zaring with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve the step grant authorization. Moving on, Council Bill 11.
Council Bill 11 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the State of Harrisonville, Missouri to authorize the city administrator to give notice of intent to withdraw to Midwest Public where it's effective July 1, 2020, and establish an effective date.
Madam Mayor, Board, this is a formality that we have to do notification within 90 days, as you all recall, that we have a program that we're utilizing in that bidding process. Thus far, we've had over three that have bid in the process, and just with the preliminary bidding process and the numbers we've seen today, it's a significant savings that we should be able to bring to the board, and so with that, we need to at least have this completed. Andrew Shaw was a part of the group that we reached out to.
Need a motion to approve it?
Thank you.
A motion to approve Council Bill 11.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner to approve Council Bill 11, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Council Bill 11 becomes Resolution 008. Council Bill 12.
Council Bill 12 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen authorizing the mayor to approve a memorandum of understanding between C. Hurst of Harrisonville Real Estate LLC and the City of Harrisonville, Missouri with respect to assisted living and memory care community to be developed at 2606 Rock Haven Road, Harrisonville, Missouri, and establish an effective date.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Mayor, members of the council, this request comes from Dover Development for Chapter 100, finance, assistance. They're proposing to build a 70,000 square foot assisted living and memory care facility just next to Cascanti Regional and the old Heritage, Heritage tractor, tractor site. Tonight, this is a memorandum of understanding, which sets out the intentions of both parties. It's Dover's intentions to build, build, build the facility and be a $10 million facility, 73 beds, and at 2606 Rock Haven Road. It would be the city's intent to help incentivize the project with a 50% 20-year tax, tax abatement, and a sales tax exemption on construction materials. In the audience this evening, we have a bond counsel, financial advisor, Dave Martin Gilmore Bell, Joe McLean with McLean and Company, and then with Dover, we have Tina Charlebel, who's driven in today from St. Louis, and I'm asking if she would just brief you on the project. This will be coming to the Planning Commission at their April meeting for a special use permit.
Thank you. Tina?
Do you need my name and address? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you again.
Yes, absolutely. Well, my name's Tina Charlebel, I'm the- Yes, absolutely. Well, um, my name's Tina Charlebel. I'm the owner's rep for Cedarhurst Senior Living. First of all, I appreciate your time here tonight. Um, special thanks to Roger Brad and Mayor Bowman for helping us, um, get to the point where we're ready to, um, get a, a response on this Chapter 100 tax abatement approval. So, um, I, I, where I'm going to start is just kind of an overview of Cedarhurst, what we do. And then we can talk through the, the reasons we're requesting this Chapter 100 abatement and open it up for any sort of, uh, questions. Um, so a little bit about the Dover family of companies. We, um, we have several different companies that kind of handle our projects from start to finish. We have Dover Development, which is the company that I work for. Cedarhurst Senior Living is the operator. Dover Capital is the, the group that sources the, um, fundraising portion of the projects. And then Brahms Construction is our general contractor. Then, uh, further, further about us, we've been around for about 13 years. We, we develop, construct, build, and operate our communities. We've got about 35 now in the Midwest and Southeast. Um, we're growing pretty rapidly. We've got seven under construction and another five under development, um, one of those being Cedarhurst Harrisonville. And, you know, we're really, we're really excited to continue to work with the city and, and bring a high-quality product for seniors to, to the city. Um, a little bit about us from the operations side. We, we operate independent living, assisted living, and memory care communities. For those of you who maybe aren't as familiar with, um, the different realms and levels of service for, for seniors, we, we focus more on assisted living and memory care. And assisted living is for seniors who are at varying levels of acuity, but, um, you know, some need little to no assistance and other need, others need assistance for their activities of daily living, whether that be medication administration, um, bathing, dressing, um, transportation, any, anything like that. So, um, so it's just a really good place for our, for the seniors and their family to feel like, like their loved one is safe and has 24/7 nursing care, um, and just kind of, kind of ease that, that worry of the aging population. So, then the memory care portion that we have, it is designed for people who have had a, um, diagnosis of Alzheimer's or another form of dementia. It's a little bit of a smaller group with higher staffing ratios, um, a lot of activities that are designed to kind of help slow the progression of the disease, and then it is secure. So the residents that have, um, a risk of wandering and being a danger to themselves, it's just, and again, another way of protection for the families as they, um, as they're dealing with such a tough time to begin with. So, um, in addition to the, the care staff, we have fresh style free meals a day. We, um, have housekeeping services, laundry, physical therapy. Um, it's kind of a full, full gamut of, of services that seniors might need, um, as they're, as they're living with us. Um, and then project specific, we, we are looking at kind of a total spend of about $13 million on this project from start to finish. Um, we are looking at 52 assisted living units and 21 memory care apartments. Uh, if you're looking on this site plan, this is a sample floor plan. All of the areas that are shaded and green, that's going to be your assisted living side, and then the purple is the memory care. So, within these communities, we, we have, um, three outdoor courtyards. We have a movie theater, a salon, a spa, physical therapy, and then just a lot of common areas for people to hang out, do activities, and, um, and just kind of make it as, as active as possible for those who, who wish to be active. We do also offer transportation, um, whether that be to medical appointments or events in the, in the community that, that seniors who are wanting to participate can get out and interact with people in the community. Um, this Missouri Certificate of Need Analysis, so, so the Department of Health and Senior Services, they require that we obtain this certificate before we're able to do anything. Um, we have received that approval, but this kind of a quick overall, this is how we, how they, this is determined by, by the state of Missouri. So, this is essentially saying that, you know, 25 out of 1,000 seniors that are 65 years and older in a 15-mile radius are going to utilize some type of service like we offer. Um, they, they take that number, subtract it by the licensed beds that are in that 15-mile radius, and then that determines either there's a need or a surplus of beds. So, they determine that there's a need for 175 beds within a 15-mile radius of our site. Per comparison, the other Missouri projects we've done have shown surplus, um, beds. Based on this calculation, this is the first one we've ever encountered that has a need. Usually what we have to do is we kind of have to make the argument, you know, there's skilled beds that don't really apply to us. There's affordable, uh, communities that take Medicaid, don't really apply. There's outdated products. You kind of have to work your way back to what is a, what is an actual need. So, this was really encouraging when we saw this, um, to, to kind of further solidify the fact that there is a need for this, this type of community in Harrisonville. Um, from a labor standpoint, each of our communities provides about 50 jobs with $1.5 million of the annual payroll. That is a combination of full and part-time employees. Um, we have not only the nursing care staff, but housekeeping, drivers, activities, um, you know, just lots of, lots of different opportunities. And I have been working with the, the CEO of the hospital next door to, um, to work on some grading requests that we have, and he's already given me the name of a main director. So, we're ahead of the curve on hiring. And then just where we are with the project right now. So we have it under contract. We're at 2606 Rock Haven Road. We'll close once we get all of our approvals and our building permit is issued. Our certificate, our certificate of need was approved on January 6th. Our architectural and engineering plans are finalized. We are just doing one final review with our construction manager, and we plan to submit for permit, um, this week. So, uh, assuming we get that done, assuming we are within the timelines that Roger's giving me with it, which is give or take two months for, for full approval, and of course, um, planning commission approval as well, we're looking to break ground early May. And we have a target opening date of spring, uh, or, sorry, summer of 2021. Um, and then on to the fun stuff, the request for the, the Chapter 100. So, so like Roger said, we, we've, um, requested a 50% abatement over 20 years and then the use of the city's tax exempt, tax exempt status on construction materials. So, you know, when we, when we first set about asking for this, we hadn't done any, you know, site due diligence yet. We weren't quite there in the project, but, um, you know, we're looking at market rates and just given the fact that there's really nothing similar in Harrisonville. We, we feel confident about the market, the demographics, the, you know, the senior population here, but rates, the, the closest thing we have to compare it off of is going to be in Melton and Raymore. Presumably, they're, they're pulling kind of more from the, um, the KC metro area, whereas we'd be pulling from the south, and it's, it's just not quite comparable trade area. So we're, um, we're kind of, you know, more or less guessing on that, getting in line with those rates, but, you know, once we get here, we're not sure what kind of rates we will actually be able to achieve. So that was the original reason for the request of the, the property tax abatement. Um, as we started going through our due diligence, there was some unanticipated site work. The, the entire site is essentially rock and core soil, so I don't think we'll experience any flooding. But, but that will, that will result in higher, um, higher cost for, for our site work. Plus, we're going to have to bring in a, enough fill from an outside location in order to get our building pad stabilized so that we can pour our foundation. It's a 70,000 square foot footprint. Again, that's quite a big cost. Secondly, we did not realize that there was a storm sewer running across the property. It wasn't picked up in the altar survey. Um, so that is going to need to be relocated. It runs parallel to the, the sanitary sewer, which we already knew about. Um, and then there's some, you know, the, the site is, is, is a little bit blighted. The, um, we did do a, a phase one and a phase two environmental assessment based on what's existing at that, at that, um, site and what the usage. So, there will be some, uh, special remediation, a little bit of asbestos or some other unsuitable areas, and that just requires kind of a special level of care when you're hauling those, those offsite. So, those are kind of what, what we're dealing with on, on the construction standpoint. And then we were not anticipating, um, the, to the extent, the infrastructure cost that we were being asked to, to perform or, or, sorry, pay for, um, in order to upgrade the infrastructure. So, namely, the sewer lift station upgrade, that wasn't something that was on our radar. And then the elect, the electric transformer fee that, uh, the price that we were quoted at the beginning was quite a bit higher than anything we've seen in comparable markets and similar markets in Missouri on our last few projects. So, uh, we certainly appreciate the, the willingness of the, um, of the city to, to allow us to do that at cost. So, um, you know, the, the market rate, the market rate issue, I think, with the, the tax abatement or the, the real estate tax abatement will, will help us kind of get a little more comfort around that piece of it. And then being able to use the, the sales tax exemption on our, um, on our construction costs, that'll help kind of even everything out. So, you know, with these site costs, and not one single issue is going to kill your deal, but when you add them all together, it just kind of gets a little concerning from a feasibility standpoint. So, again, we appreciate that, um, that we got the recommendation from Mayor Bowman to, to move forward at what we've agreed on and, um.
And that's all I've got. I'll open up any questions that I might have.
Do you have a question? Uh, since you're doing a Chapter 100 abatement on your taxes, right now, the, the city is up for a levy increase for the property taxes for its school. So normally, they, you do a lieu of taxes to the school, and I'd like to know what amount that you're going to provide in lieu of taxes.
Um, I, I believe it would be 50% of whatever the, the full amount would be. And I apologize if I'm not the, the tax abatement expert, but if that's not your understanding of what that would look like.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, it was my, David Martin with Gilmore and Bell serving as bond counsel on the transaction. And it was my understanding this would probably be done on a percentage basis. I'm looking at Joey's nodding and the affirmative, which would be, it would be analyzed on each year. So, the taxes would be calculated. They would have it in due, were it not for the abatement in each year. And then a bill would be sent by the city to the company for one half of that amount. So if there were levy increases, those would then be reflected by that 50% being calculated on a bigger number.
And how, how soon will we know that amount?
We will produce estimates of what that amount would be in the Chapter 100 plan that's sent out to the taxing jurisdictions, but that will be based on the current tax rates. So right now, the 2019 tax rates, as we will have the ability to predict what everybody's levy will be going forward.
And are you also going to try for a TDD tax on your driveways?
No.
No. Any other questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Charlebel? Okay. All right, Council Bill 12. Okay. Just a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve, to Council Bill 12 to the second reading.
It's just a resolution, Alderman.
Oh, it's a resolution?
Yeah.
Yes, I make a motion. Should do that.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson, with a second from Alderman Turner, to approve Council Bill 12. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 12 becomes Resolution R009. Council Bill 13.
Council Bill 13 is a resolution of Harrisonville, Missouri to allow the signing of a contract for the sale of real estate and establish an effective date. Madam Mayor, that might be mine. We, uh, we've already previously agreed to sell two lots on Mechanic Street. Contract's already written and approved, but in order to document that the mayor had authority to sign it, I prepared a resolution, asked Randy to put it on the agenda so that we have a record in our minutes that the sale was approved and the mayor was authorized to sign it. So that's all this resolution is. There's, there's no change in terms of the sale or anything.
He's looking for a motion.
For the first.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Miller with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 13 is approved and becomes Resolution 010. Council Bill 14.
Council Bill 14 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri amending Section 110.197 of the Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances to change the procedure and conditions for private citizens to address the Board of Aldermen and establish an effective date. First, you're in Council Bill 014. The, the rest, the ordinance that's being proposed establishes a, I think, a more identified and easily to follow procedure for citizens who want to come before the board and address the board with questions. And the principal change is that staff is going to get five days' notice so that it gives staff a chance to address the concerns. And for example, the folks that came up about Shady Lane today, in effect, what they really want is they want to know, "City, would you make it one-way?" Or, "City, would you abandon the alley?" Or, "City, is there something you can do about people driving off the alleyway?" And unfortunately, now the city can refer to the chief and can refer to Public Works, but if we'd have known that five days prior, um, not put the chief on the spot, but I imagine he could have gone out and checked that, and we could have had Eric review, you know, the issue of one-way versus order vacation. And so that when it comes to the board and they ask to address the board, you might have been able to give them, you know, some immediate feedback, or the city staff could, or you could say, "Hey, look, we, we've already got this handled." And Mr. Ratliff used a very similar procedure and peculiar, and it worked very well. I don't mean to speak for him, and he can answer that, but it, it actually avoided, you know, citizen frustration because they're not given the answer to a question when in fact it needs to come from staff, and staff already gives it to them. So, that is, that's, the idea is to try and actually allow you all to be better prepared, allow staff to address issues first, and so that things can actually move quicker, not, not better. And Brad, I'll let you take it from there.
Yes, sir. It just, essentially, it's what the council said, is it gives an opportunity. I think a lot of times it gives more frustration, uh, to the citizens, and if we, um, go by this procedure, we can have information ahead of time and get them answers in a quicker manner.
So, uh, I got a question. So, like, tonight, they have, they want information up, up here. So they, they're going to tell us the information they have, explain it to us, and then you're going to tell them five days later on, come back for the answer.
No, they would have that, we would have that ahead of the meeting so that we can have the information prepared for them by the time of the meeting.
Is informing your packet.
So, so in effect, Alderman, how it would work is, I want to get on the agenda to talk about Shady Lane. And so, the answer is, fill out a form, and then city's going to, city staff's going to be advised, "Hey, look, I, I want to ask the Board of Aldermen to do something about Shady Lane." And then Brad could identify, "Hey, look, I need to get my chief of police out there. I need to get Eric from Public Works out there so we can provide information to the Aldermen when they come to speak." And so it's just basically an advance notice process that if you want to get on the agenda, you're going to then, this is, this is how it gets done, and it gets you on the agenda, but it also gives the chi, the city staff, who would be the appropriate people, a chance to address those in advance. That's the idea.
Okay. But they will still be able to come up here and tell us their problems.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
As mad as they get, or, or as ugly as it gets, because we've been through a lot of ugly stuff in the past, which that's part of our job, is to listen, and I don't want to lose that. I mean, they're the boss of us. We're not the boss of them. And they have a right to speak if, if they're mad or they're angry, and I understand it, and I know they don't always get it right because they don't know all the rules. Lord, I don't know all the rules. But I don't want to take that away from these people being able to stand up there and speak and cut us out.
I don't know. We're not taking, we're not taking that away from anyone. We're just trying to operate in a more efficient manner so that, so that we have the opportunity to provide answers to them the night that they come.
I understand.
Alderman Turner?
Hey, I mean, so if we go this route and they spit the question and we provide a prompt answer, since they're on the agenda, we can discuss it and make a motion and move on that?
Yes. I'm with you on everything except when you said make a motion and move on it. If, if, for example, the only thing, as long as it's the motion off right under the code, I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want citizens to think that no matter what they come up for and ask, we can grant it on the spot, because obviously, for example, if it involves changing the code, then we would have to adopt the ordinance and publish, and that's all I meant.
Right. I mean, on the codes or something, but I just.
Yeah, they, if they wanted to change zoning, they have to go through normal zoning.
Well, right.
But this would be more for, uh, different, different questions. What is, what happens and what my experience is. What is, what happens and what my experience has been is, once a lot of times they come in and fill that out, they end up getting the answer usually right then, and they didn't realize that they could have got it right at the moment. I think that's where a lot of times frustration comes from and the anger comes from, is because they don't know that they can get that answer in certain easier areas.
But also, if this is, since they're on the agenda, we can engage feedback.
Exactly.
We can go back and forth and not just listen.
Right. 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 That way you have that in front of you to have a, an intelligent conversation.
Yeah.
Because you will have a copy of the agenda request form, what their question was and what staff's response is.
Right.
Any other questions?
I just have one.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Just, so will, will staff have given them an answer before then, or will that all be presented that night? Because I think what Dave, I, I appreciate David's concern, but they're still going to come up and speak, but it's going to give staff five days to get them the answers that they're asking about. So, like with Shady Lane tonight, they would, staff would be able to tell them tonight, "Here's what we've seen, here's what's happening, here's what we're going to do, here's..." And they don't have to then wait two to three weeks or however long it takes for us to be able to accomplish that, to have an answer. We should, we hopefully at that point would be able to give an answer that night, correct?
Correct.
I think the Shady Lane, um, ladies that came, I think that's a perfect example of why this war.
Yeah. So that they, so that they won't be waiting on us for answers. They hopefully will, will already be a step ahead and be able to provide them information that night.
I agree. My own, and I'll try to make this more plain.
But they're still going to come up here and talk.
Yeah, for these people tonight, from the fourth floor down there, they're through living hell, they've got to have someone to lay it out to. They all put their hearts on what they're saying. They want to yell at us because they don't think we're doing enough, and that's fine with me. I can take that. I don't want that to stop. That's important.
Absolutely.
That's part of hearing from what's going on in this town.
It's not.
And they've got to be able to express their, their opinion, whether it's good or bad, or it's directed at me or anybody else, we have to stand there and take that.
It's still public participation, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm good with that.
Any other questions?
Right here. Can I ask a question, Alderman?
No, sir.
Oh, awesome. You guys might want to ask who's going to vet who gets to speak. That seems like a pretty big part of that.
Well, it's, it is, I understand as to maybe who stands up.
Yes, there's, there's no lim, Mayor, can I get to that? Sir, there's no limitation on who can fill out a card, and if you fill out a request to speak, you can be on the agenda. That, they're not limiting that in any way. It's only trying to give staff and the citizens opportunity to speak first because that's where most of the issues can be resolved.
Okay. Can I hear the motion?
I make a motion.
And this is an ordinance, so we need a second reading.
To move to second reading.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner, with a second from Alderman Dorhoff, to advance Council Bill 14 to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council 014 is in ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Missouri, amending section 110.197 of the Harrisville Code of Ordinances to change the procedure and conditions of the private citizens to address the Board of Aldermen in establishing effective date. Second, Council 015.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 14 becomes ordinance 3489. Council Bill 15.
Council 15 is in ordinance to amend chapter 130, financing purchasing policy by repealing sections 130.020, enacting in lieu thereof a new purchasing policy, section 130.020, red line additions to be approved by the Board of Aldermen and an established and effective date. First reading, Council 015.
Madam Mayor and Board, uh, essentially this is a, an item that we've discussed in the past about, um, once you've approved the budget and you've approved the projects, um, it seems redundant that staff come back again, uh, for those approval when you've already established the process and how things are to be bid, and then the process of how things are to be conducted, and then you approve the budget, um, to be able to do that, and then we end up prolonging business and holding up business because then they have to get back on the agenda again to get approval for something you've already approved. And so what this does is, once you've established your budget and the projects that have been approved for the year, then we go through the process and the normal bidding process and get the required bids, and then in the end, uh, that, that is decided upon, the city administrator approves that and we move down the road. If, for some reason, whatever we have bid is higher than what you've approved in the budget, then the decision would then come to the board to determine from the board, "Do you want to move forward with this project, or do you want to move forward with this equipment, or would you rather us not do it?" So, it would be more of you all deciding at that time, because when we went out to bid, the bids were all a lot higher than what was anticipated in budget, and then we have to determine which would take board action if you decided to eliminate a project or eliminated a piece of equipment because you felt it was more important to do that project or to do that equipment, or if you found it to be that you didn't want to do the project and you just tell us at that time, "Just forget it," and, and move forward from that. So it gives a little cleaner process and it's not constantly bringing things before the board that you've already approved. And, uh, once you've approved it, then it would only be coming to you if it came over That's the high level view.
Well, uh, I don't know. I'm, uh, I don't think I like this one. I like to see what we are doing. I know it may be redundant to put it back on the agenda, but maybe I've changed my mind after we voted it in at the budget level. There's some, some things changed and then I may not feel the same way, so I, I don't, I don't like it. I would rather do it the way we're doing it. I don't see that it has saved any more time to bring it back and put it back on the agenda. And it keeps, it keeps you knowing what you've done and that we fulfilled what we voted in the budget. It helps me, it helps remind me of what we're doing. And sometimes there's things in the budget that we vote on at the time that's all fun when we voted right off the bat, but when it comes before us to okay it, I may have changed my mind, or maybe somebody else might have. And I think the process that we have now works pretty good. It's a double check that you're still in favor of doing that project. Now, maybe somebody agreed or feared off, but that's how I feel about it. I think it's a, I think this is a better, the way it's working now is a safeguard. And things change all the time. You get to hear from Eric or whoever is presenting it. Maybe he's had a different take on whether we need that budget or not. This is just like it's going to automatically go through, and I forget all, I forget all the things we okayed in the budget. I mean, it's a little hard to remember everything. And sometimes I decide that I don't want to do it after we've okayed it. Usually when I find out that the budget is either, I do go ahead and support it, but there have been times when I haven't. So, that's just my opinion.
Any other comments or questions?
Nice.
Alderman Milner?
So my question would be, it's, it's not going to not come back up on the agenda. It will be brought back to us at that point to approve that?
No.
If, if, if the amount is over what we approved in the budget, it will come back to us.
Only if it goes over. I want to see it on every agenda that comes up. I, I think that's important.
Well, I mean, we've already approved the budget and.
I agree.
We've already said so much amount. Now, it is redundancy, but I mean, it is also a check, but how much time will be saved?
I definitely understand. Just put it on the agenda, okay?
Well, you're saving in that, you're saving in time, uh, you're saving in staff. That's why you have a city administrator and department heads.
And some of those are, are time sensitive, you know, that you're at quit sometimes, and we wait for another meeting by that, and like, miss out.
I think one thing, a good example of this, and Chris Deal, I know you're over there somewhere. Was, was we approved in the budget for a van for the community center, and we lost several of them before we got back and got an approval from the board to move forward with it. So that, I see your point because it was, even though the van we ended up with wasn't budgeted, but we did lose out on several previous to that because we were waiting on the next board meeting to get approval to spend the money that was already in the budget.
Very good point.
Correct.
Any other questions, discussion? It's your roll call, please. I'm sorry.
I'll just move the rules.
No. Got it, I'm sorry. Out of motion first.
Oh. Sustained the rules on Council 15, and it's a second reading, please.
Okay, in a second. I have a motion from Alderman Miller, with a second from Alderman Dorhoff, to advance Council Bill 15 to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Second reading.
Council 015 is in ordinance to amend chapter 130, financing purchasing policy by repealing sections 130.020, enacting in lieu thereof a new purchasing policy, section 130.020, red line additions to be approved by the Board of Aldermen and an established and effective date. Second, Council 015.
Roll call.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 15 becomes ordinance 3490. Alderman, may I report, Alderman Turner?
Not much. I would be safe. Wash your hands, keep a distance, and say hello.
Alderman Dickerson?
Uh, well, I've been out, of course, everybody knows from campaign, uh, one of the requests that I've been hearing from everyone, from a certain group of people is that they would like to have some more villa-style, um, building, uh, project built in this town. Uh, there's a lot of single ladies out there that want to get rid of their homes, that they don't want to go into assisted living or this, other one just approved. And, uh, I was hoping maybe there was some way that, uh, we could bury the hatchet with Mrs. Hart and try to go and extend it only branch to try to make it so that she would like to come, because it seems like she knows how to make those things work. I don't know if that's what the rest of the board feels like, but I think we need to see past what our feelings are about what she's done and do the right thing for the citizens of Harrisonville that want those kind of living places.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Uh, third board reports, uh, we had two full-time positions, one for custodian, one for parks maintenance. We filled both of them. Uh, we had a new, uh, more in the budget, and we have, that has since been delivered, and the $6,000 less than was budgeted, so we were happy with that. Uh, spring youth volleyball is set to begin on March 23rd. The only reason I brought that up is participants in spring of 2019 was 50. This year it's 82, so we've seen quite an increase in that. Total membership count as of February 2020 was 4,300, which is very good. Uh, I may have Chris Deal, please, to speak to the situation with, uh, the Elks Lodge and the fishing deal and their situation where they were needing some help on the 501(c)(3) that we agreed to help them with. Well, I'd rather you speak to that so everybody's on board with it.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Um, the Fishing Derby, which is Cas County, and it's run in conjunction with the Fishing Day by the Missouri Department of Conservation, is something the Parks and Recreation did some time ago. Um, but several years ago, the Elks Lodge asked if they could take it over. It was a community service they'd like to do, which was a very good thing, and we applauded them for that, and they've done very well with it. Um, the problem is, the Elks Lodge, a national organization, is telling them that they do not have the staffing to cover the 501(c)(3), all the paperwork that goes along with that. So they asked if our Parks Foundation could, um, like, be, uh, a vehicle for donated checks, like from Walmart or whatever. Our park board agreed to that. We already work in conjunction with them. We provide them the amphitheater and the facility and everything like that. So, the park board agreed that that would not be a problem, uh, to do that. So we're just working a little closer with the Elks Lodge. Uh, it's three to 400 kids that come and fish on that day. It's one of our, uh, wonderful activities that we have in City Park, and so I think the partnership, uh, works very well, and that's what the park board agreed to do.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, also, uh, uh, we're still working on getting the, the, uh, funds raised for the dog park, and currently we're approximately a little less than $14,000 from our goal to get started on that, so we're hoping to complete that in the near future as well. And that would conclude my remarks.
Thank you. Alderman Reese?
Uh, the law, I, I do want to say that a town hall meeting about a week and a half ago, uh, was well attended. It's really exciting to see so many people coming to these meetings. It gets bigger and better, it seems like every time, and we appreciate those people coming. And I want to thank all of you, all of you, for your contributions.
That's fine. More people can. Alderman Milner?
Um, just want to remind everybody heads up that, uh, school is not in session this week for spring break. Hopefully it will be a one-week period of time, um, but, so just be safe as you're driving through town, kind of keep your eyes open for kids because they probably will be out and about on the streets.
Thank you. Alderman Dorhoff?
I was just going to mention that we had a great town homing last Saturday morning, or the day before that, and, uh, what a great community Harrisonville is, and especially as we get through the, the virus, um, you know, let's take care of each other, check on the neighbors, especially the elderly, if they're not able to get out and get food and if they need assistance. Uh, we should do a great job of doing that in this town.
That is a very true statement. Thank you. Alderman Zaring?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing at this time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Davidson?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Enjoy your family.
Bye, Al. Thank you.
Mr. Atliff?
Yes, the, um, as you all recall from the work session, uh, we will continue to monitor , uh, the COVID-19, uh, and if it continues to progress or whatever happens with the next term that we get any type of notifications on, uh, we will be sure to notify you as
on, uh, we will be sure to notify you as well as the public, uh, on those plans and how it affect, um, the city, uh, and, and especially the, the local government here. One of the things, uh, a few things I wanted to address from, uh, by the comment, because Simon ran out on that. Um, the, uh, we have been in discussions with the Corps of trying to get a meeting set up, um, with the Corps to come to the city to do the presentation, uh, to, uh, the public. Um, as you know, our priority is informing the Walker addition before we inform others of that in that process. So others that are asking about that, we felt it would be rude to not let the Walker addition know as soon as we know. As of this afternoon, the Corps had agreed to an April 1st, uh, presentation and then right before the meeting, because of the, the president's announcement in CDC, that's in flux because they might, may not be able to even come, uh, to Harrisonville because of the federal requirements that are coming out. And, and we find it important for them to be here to give that presentation. So, um, we will, as soon as we know what happens, I don't, I don't know how long this is going to take, uh, and be able to get that information, uh, from them, but that is where we're at right now. So it would be April 1st at six o'clock, but that could change. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that because as of when I walked in the meeting, he sent me an email and said, well, we may not be able to do April 1st because of the announcement that came out. So we'll make sure that everybody knows about that when they do that and when we finally get confirmation from them.
Will they be able to do it by video conference?
We, that's what we discussed. We discussed if they, if, if they get to that point where they can do it by video conference, we can do that. But the, the other concern is if we get in some more strict requirements, we may not be able to have them in video conference with the amount of public that would be available because we'd be violating those assembling, uh, requires. So that's, that's the problem. It's not just them coming in on the video side, it's on our side too. It's what we can do and what we'll be required to do because, uh, as of tonight, we're getting to the point where it's going to get more and more difficult if they keep changing to even have meetings. Um, so pretty sad to be, you can't be with yourself and, or you're going to be maybe spread out.
If that is the case, is the meeting going to be here or is it going to be at the community center?
It, that's what we'll determine. Hopefully it'll be here.
Right. Can I ask one more question while you're on the topic? If, if we can't have that meeting, will the Corps at least provide the information? You said that Walker would get that ahead of time. Would we have that and would the Walker addition, um, uh, residents have access to that information? Even if we can't do it on April 1st, would they at least be able to get that information?
Yeah, but I don't know if they've understood. Uh, it's hard for us to even follow some of the, the things, even the preliminary things that I've seen. I'm not an engineer and I go, what is that? You know, so that's, that's some of the, yeah, we might be able to get some kind of recap from this over to get some information, right?
At least to provide them something?
Right. We'll, that's what we're trying. I mean, I, I can't, I can't, you know, tell you because it depends on what the Corps wants to do across that. So with that, um, we'll also, you know, as you all know, we don't own any of the creek. We don't any, own any of the culverts. Moda owns all the culverts through there. They're cleaning out those culverts as requested. Their engineers have reviewed that. The police department has investigated the tree cutting, cannot determine who cut the trees. Uh, the other portion of it is the creeks that are in question are owned by private owners. The city has no authority, uh, over those, those areas, but we are doing the coordination to try to get everybody through that. With that, there is some FEMA programs because of my previous life and things that I've been involved with. And it's, you know, the city, I don't know of any city that ever hasn't, that has money to buy people out. I'm just, I've never worked for a city that's had, you know, money just laying around to do that. So the FEMA does have a, a program that the city can work with FEMA to try to get some opportunity of grant dollars for those buyout programs. Here's FEMA's requirement though, and this is what we can't do and that the citizens can help us out. Uh, by the time we get this meeting together and hopefully they can bring that information to us, is anytime that FEMA does those buyout programs, if you do not have flood insurance, they will not do the, the flood, uh, buyouts. It has to be on a repetitive loss program for them to be able to be eligible, uh, through the FEMA process. The city would be much willing to, uh, facilitate that. But if we, but we as a city can't even tell you who's got flood insurance and who doesn't along that manner. And so by the time we get this meeting together, if they, if the citizens will start working to provide, because I can tell you in the 11th hour, I had a board of Alderman meeting one time because a bank-owned property that we got in that program, uh, to be able to be bought out, had the special meeting. We got down to the, the moment of it and the bank did not have flood insurance on their own property. And so it got kicked out by FEMA and it wasn't eligible. But I've been involved with other processes where they had the, the flood insurance, it's on a repetitive loss program, which means it has to be over three, uh, reports that have been to their insurance as a part of that, that process. And then that makes them eligible for that program. They can do it even themselves if they wanted to, to be able to park and do that, but the city will, and they, you know, by getting this meeting together with those residents, we will, we don't mind facilitating that because again, we, we don't have power over it. We can only facilitate the state and the federal, uh, governments to try to help us out with that. As you all recall, they, they mandate that the cities, uh, police them in the sense of police those floodways to make sure nobody's building the floodplain, make sure that nobody's, you know, altering, uh, through that without civil engineering being, uh, brought in and approved. And so as a part of that process, we can then facilitate these, to these programs, but there's a lot of legwork that has to be on those property owners as well. So hopefully we can get to that meeting, we can roll out all that information that we know. Uh, hopefully with some of these things, you know, that make it more difficult for us to openly talk about through litigation can get remedy, uh, so that we can be more open and more, uh, able to have more conversation, uh, with people. But once that happens, as the attorney sitting in the room will tell you, he'll tell us all the time, you can't talk. And so that's where it gets us to that point. So we're doing the best we can on what I can tell you on what we're trying to do to facilitate with the other agencies.
Question. When we get the Corps report, will we give the business the information that they're requesting or will that put in a request or some sort of request?
I think anything we have would be the normal request of giving that information out, whatever we have. But I, I can't tell you whether that, you know.
That's probably, I mean, I probably have to defer to the Corps.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Well, no, well, I'm not talking about that. The Corps engineers, we're supposed to get their, uh, assessment in the month because we may not be able to have the meeting, you know, because of the, the Congress. But if we have a report at the county meeting, if they want requests, I know we want a cap or summary of it, but if, if they want that.
I think that would be up to the Corps because it's the Corps' information, so it would be up to them.
We can request it, right. Yeah. I, I do have just a quick question, just going back to, uh, the owners and them and insurance, the flood insurance on that. And you may not have answers now, but I think it's something that we probably need to dig into a little bit more if it's that important for that program. Uh, cause I don't know, like you said, who's got insurance, who doesn't have insurance, but I'm sure they've had probably more than three events in those areas. Um, it sounds like there's a lot of frustration out there. Is it just a documented, documented event that they can show, hey, look, I submitted it, whether I had flood insurance or not? It got denied because I didn't or? Yeah, my understanding of the program is once they have turned that information in and the city's going to have some, some information as well, but the, the, they, they have to turn that in and there's got to be documented record of it. My understanding through the flood program, um, most of those insurance companies are making those notifications when they get those kind of, of responses. And so that's how they a lot of times have that information. But they, it's a pretty detailed program that they got to go through and the city has to work through, uh, to be able to try to do that. And it, it unfortunately takes time because, you know, the wills of the federal government don't move as fast as we would like, uh, to be able to do that, but, you know, we, we will push as hard as we can.
I have a question. Um, do they have to have had the insurance during the period of time that the three events are reported?
Yes.
You couldn't, you couldn't have had three events get your insurance and everything?
No. It's got to be documented.
You could go get insurance now.
They, well, I mean, you can go get insurance now knowing that you're probably going to have an event and as that comes along with those events, it's part of that documented history, but a lot of, a lot of times they won't let you go back.
But I would think it'd be difficult to get insurance now.
Right.
Knowing, you know, who's going to insure that?
Well, the reality is that, you know, the city is a part of that program and, you know, a lot of times what I've found in my, in my experience has been is most people that have mortgages are required to have it.
That is not correct.
But the people that are, that don't have mortgages, a lot of times they don't buy that, uh, that insurance unless they're actually in the floodplain.
Is it considered a floodplain?
No.
Well, no, I mean, if it's not, if it's not within that floodplain for that requirement, it's not, you know, and that's, that's, that's the problem.
No, but Mr. Martin actually noticed part of the problem because technically where our subdivision is, we are in a floodplain. They actually have our street, two streets back from where it's supposed to be. And he actually notified, I believe it was the Army Corps of Engineers or the federal government, he did, said, hey, you guys have made a mistake on this map. And they kind of said, mm, it kind of is what it is. So he did his due diligence as a state representative, right? Or as a city official, but we're technically in a floodplain and we didn't have the, we didn't have flood insurance and we have mortgages and it was not something that was required because technically the way that it's mapped, we are not in a floodplain.
I think the answer to your question was though, can you get flood insurance?
Yes. Yes, you can, because I've had it for years.
The answer is yes, but it must be expensive. Now, quite honestly, if it's not yet designated to be in a floodplain, that should, from what I've been led to believe, actually derail the cost now. Yes. So it could be a benefit. Now, Mr. Martin did inform us that Cass County's going through a remapping process. So if those residents don't have the insurance, they might want to get it before the remapping because then it might be more expensive. But that was all something that was hopefully to be advised at the meeting Mr. Atliff was talking about. So we're doing a best we can. Right.
You indicated you weren't an engineer, so you didn't understand their study. Some of us are engineers, so we may have a better understanding than you. And you also stated that the railways and culverts, you didn't have control over those? A lot of these problem ones are city streets and culverts under city streets.
No.
They are.
No.
You'll see from their study, it is.
Okay, well, you're wrong.
Did you see their presentation last fall?
Thank you. We're going to move on.
I'm not going to argue with you.
We're going to move on. Uh, if you have a question, city attorney.
The two, two quick things. Uh, first of all, I sent yet another request to Harrisonville bill, and I've heard nothing. So at, if I don't have anything by the next meeting or in a month, I will bring to you a proposed plan of action of what comes next. But in response to your question about this, I reached out to her again, trying to, what I've communicated is we really want to get to this result. We just want to get the street repaired. We, we have, we're willing to give you time, we're willing to give you, you know, whatever, but I just can't even get them to respond. So.
That was one of my, that was one of the big things that asked me last few days.
Yep.
So I didn't have that information to say. Oh, I will say one thing, thanks to Roger called me today and informed me about the, uh, all these, I mean, that's a big question. I won't reveal the source that was told to me about it, which they said had been moved from third to third position to 24th position and there was no way it was coming to Harrisonville. And so, uh, I heard that from several other people. So today when I came up to pick my book, I asked Roger to what the status was and the status is they're going to build in this year, correct? And so I'm going to be able to pass that information out because I want to stop that rumor.
Madam Mayor, one other thing.
Sorry.
Um, I know several, uh, elected bodies are discussing and adopting procedures and ordinances if they need to have an emergency meeting where they wouldn't convene here or if we now need to limit capacity and we need to do it remotely. Uh, fortunately Harrisonville already has it in your code, uh, section that allows for video conferencing. It's 101.240 subsection eight already allows for emergency meetings and declaring that. So in the event that we do get some sort of edict that says we can't have a meeting here and we can't all be together, it's already in your code for a process to allow that to happen. So I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the January 2020 municipal court report is in your packet. Is there anything back to the media? I can't see.
No.
Yeah, okay. So no questions from the media. Um, I want to comment on the COVID-19 virus. You remember that, um, Mr. Atliff and I met with the, uh, health department on the March the 6th because we wanted to get out ahead of this. And, uh, at that time we were able to receive their recommendations and we posted that on Facebook so that you would have those. Um, we are in almost daily contact with the governor's office, with the Bureau of Emergency Services, with other city administrators. And, you know, it's a moving target. It changes hour by hour, day by day. But right now, um, I want us just to follow the, the common sense guidelines the CDC puts out. And that's basically, um, distance yourself from individuals by at least six feet. Uh, don't touch your face and make sure you wash your hands. I remember when I was in nursing school and we learned the proper way to wash your hands. It's not this and grab a towel and go. It's wash your hands for 20 seconds. Wash the fronts and the backs and in between your fingers.